Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the HPA RB Thursday, November tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. And we're going to start the meeting. Let's start with the salute to the flag. I get right in the next ten years. Okay. So I entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have somebody to move on that?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second, please.
From October twenty-seven.
All in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So the next motion that we need is to open a public hearing for twenty-five Wolf Point Road.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so is anyone here to present on Wolf Point Road? Please come on up and introduce yourself.
I still have some booklets to follow along.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, please identify yourself.
Yes, I'm Christine Georgiou.
I'm Gregor Belena.
And we are Copey Designers at twenty-five Wolf Point Road. And so today we're presenting plans for a new construction. For this home that is situated on North Hill in Sag Harbor. So the site is bound to the west by Morris Cove and to the east by Wolf Point Road. And the house we're presenting is a single-family residence. And our design refers to the waterfront industrial history of Sag Harbor, but also maintains the pitch roof vernacular of homes that are typical of the region. Our clients wanted a volume with expansive views largely to be south and oriented toward the water. We accomplished this with an L-shaped plan that creates these sort of intimate coves around the gathering areas, but maintains privacy to the street and to the neighbors on the north side of the house. So we call this Cove House to relate to these homes of intimacy. And it's a two-story home with four bedrooms. And it also includes a detached garage and a pool.
Excuse me.
Motion.
Thank you.
We consider the house to have two approaches. One from the street and one from the water. Well, talk about the street approach since we look at the front facade facing Wolf Point Road. From the street, we have a mainly closed facade with just necessary openings. So the entry to the house and this sliding door entry to like a gathering room, which also opens onto the pool area. We're utilizing brick in the front of the house. And we're utilizing the unitized nature of brick to also create these brise soleil walls, where we want to maintain privacy, but also allow sunlight from the back of the building. Also, in the front of the house, we wanted to express a barrel vault that exists inside in this room under this pitched roof. So we did that with this cutout wall, which inclines into the room and creates this sort of corridor light in that bedroom, but maintains privacy in that space.
We are actually also deciding to express Sag Harbor industrial history with our last block, a very story, and relates to the house with the use of the same brick. We consider the garage with the same chair language as the house, since it's one of the most, as we see here, one of the most visible elements from this. From the water, the house opens. The house opens with a large window. A left-to-left lightweight structure that acts as a pergola. This pergola performs two functions. One is to maintain the pitch roof form of the house, and the other is to support shading elements. You see here, and elements of vegetation, too. In contrast to the street, to the street approach, from the water, we reference Sag Harbor's maritime architecture through lightweight steel and netted railings in this facade. We are working with a previous and destroyed site. And any building activity will necessitate curing. So in consideration to this of this disturbing and existing ecosystem, we designed a vegetative green roof to support grasses and herbs that are attracted to birds and other things on the roof. Finally, decide also to designate a naturally vegetated passage to the bay for wildlife on the north side of the focus. So that is, well, the roof. This is the.
Stream down.
Yes, this is the green roof that I was explaining to.
Yes. So that's like.
Yeah.
And then maybe just to walk briefly through the site plan. So what we're doing is, this is, this is the sort of natural, vegetated area. We're maintaining some trees that are already just in here for privacy. And our fenced area, around the front of the house, which is creating this seating area on the front and then back by the pool in order to the sun and lighting line.
Also, this element, this is a short wall, but also we designed with the same brick. They can actually see here to give privacy to this patio in the back. See what keeps us from falling.
It's structural steel.
Yeah. Would anybody like to make any observations or comments?
I was just wondering what holds up that brick wall that goes into the house if you remove the window above that curve.
Right. So it's more of a cutout than an arch, right? We're not, the brick is not actually acting as an arch there. And.
This is all brick.
But it's face.
That was shades.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, face brick.
Face.
In the front, so structure behind it. Yeah, so it. Yeah, so that wall will be thickened.
Okay.
To support that incline.
Gotcha, because you said that's a bedroom.
Correct.
Sleeping under that.
Yeah, and the window would be, would be hot.
Say it.
It's quite, it's quite above it, actually, though, that incline doesn't begin until about four feet above.
I see, okay.
It's brick veneer, that's what you're saying.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not structurally brick, it's, it's a, it's a wood-framed house.
Oh, it's a wood-framed house with a brick.
Would be a brick, either a full brick or, or we're looking into full brick versus face brick.
Okay, I see, all right, well, that relieves my.
Yeah, we have, actually, we have some bricks that's here with the colors you could view.
And this house obviously isn't contributing.
There.
That whole area is.
This is our, this is our tunnel mix. And so we have a warm gray, a full gray, and then the sort of textured whitish gray.
It's gonna be a kind of more beige house.
This is outside the historic district, correct? Yeah, okay, this.
And there was a house there?
No.
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 Yeah, I looked on Google Earth, it looks like it's just a bunch of trees.
It's just a bunch of trees.
It's an empty lot.
Wow.
Yeah.
So this is outcome, and I'll ask anybody who wants to go first. This is an unusual design for Sag Harbor, to say the least. Out of curiosity, is there concern about paparazzi or something, why this house is, doesn't even have one window facing the street?
Yeah.
Okay. I have been just advised that there's a code challenge that our building inspector said that the code doesn't allow for the combination of flat roof and a pitch roof. So this is, even though you have it as a green roof, I still think that that's something that needs to be, be resolved.
Yeah.
So I don't know, I mean, I don't want to be rude, but should we invest our time on reviewing something that's we believe or we've been advised is not compliant?
Correct, I, yeah, I spoke with Chris this morning, and we are planning to move to the ZBA to to get approval of the mix of pitch roof and a, and a flat roof, or what is going to be considered a flat roof. We thought we would still wanted to stay on the schedule and go ahead and do today to get your feedback on this design, and I mean, we, we aren't, we'd like to progress on, on details and getting into construction drawings, but we, we won't do that until we know we're moving forward. So we are hoping to hear from you, any initial thoughts and feedback you might have, especially in regard to any facade and the garage.
So.
Material.
So I'll continue my comment, it's a stunning design without a doubt. One of the things that we look for is, is the pool and the privacy, and they're usually in the backyards. Officially, I think the waterfront's your front yard. Where's the code here? Okay. Do you need me to read you from the code or from the record?
We understand.
You understand it, okay. So, so you're, you're neighbored to the south side of the property, that's an existing home.
Correct.
So the question is, we don't have really a fully blown landscaping plan. Is there going to be privacy, some sort of separation between the pool and the neighbor on the south?
Yeah, there's currently that, that property has a line of, I think it's everybody's. He lives near us, they're quite tall, they're like twenty, twenty feet or something. And they, they have some plantings already for privacy, we would supplement that. We are also trying to leave as much of the, you know, natural privacy that is already there, some of the more fully grown trees that will disappear with structure.
So we'd appreciate, I, I think I'd appreciate a little more detail on that.
Okay.
And I'm not sure what else to say, though, that pretty much concludes my comments, anybody else want to?
I'm, I'm curious about the color of the brick. As far as I know, I can't think of any other houses in Sag Harbor that are made of gray brick. There are very few brick houses, and I don't think there are any gray brick houses, so it's not being thought of in the vernacular of Sag Harbor itself. But you're not in the historic district, so that's mitigates that. And then the other thing that's, that's most unusual is the arch way, it looks kind of medieval. And again, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't say Sag Harbor. Although, again, you're not in the historic district. And I also have a question about, I think you explained it, but I, the, on the second peak there, what causes that black and white effect?
That's a, the right here you're referring to.
Yeah.
That's a brise soleil, so the brick is, is alternating openings.
Oh, I see, so that's actually see-through?
Correct, yeah.
That's because they have the pergola on the, on the roof behind them. See, this is another, this is another privacy, it's like a lattice.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, it's, it's, it's for privacy, it's also, we, we really wanted to maintain the, the look of the double pitch. And without that, we, you know, if we had it open, it, it just feels like something is missing.
So, so this is kind of industrial, though, not having a window, any sort of window or opening towards the street. And, and we have seen other designs that were kind of foreboding industrial, and we weren't really comfortable with that. I wouldn't say industrial, I think it, I think it looks like a fortress. Fortress, okay.
Fortress.
Yeah. That's a better word, that's.
A little fortress.
Not that that's a good thing or a bad thing.
No, that's not, not necessarily a negative.
That's, that's for us, but yeah, I think, I think with the, maybe, Gabrielle, if you could explain the brise soleil here and how we, because if you look at what is happening on the inside of the house, invite us to understand where we decided to put our windows.
So for example, this brise soleil we see here is part of, is in the second floor of the house. We have this area with laundry and bathroom, too. And to avoid this kind of windows exposed to the street, we create this kind of small patio behind, behind the brise soleil. So that provides the privacy we mentioned, but also ventilation and light to this.
For these three rooms surrounding it, all kind of benefit from that one opening.
This is kind of a service area, so also wanted to avoid to have those windows directly.
Kind of a way to get a rooftop deck without making a rooftop deck. Right.
That's all the rooftop garden.
Yeah, but he's talking about the patio up here.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
An accessible patio, it's, maybe we shouldn't, it's, it's, it's an opening, so it's open from above, so you'd like coming in from above and from the front. But.
So we can eventually access to this from the, this space, which is the laundry, to keep the proper ventilation also for rooms. And this does a much less.
Yeah, like small.
I think it's a really interesting design. I hate to see the clearing of lots for houses. So I appreciate that you factor in some kind of like ecological spirit to the house. I wonder, over time, the plants that are growing like in the back of the house on the pergola, are they gonna come through the brise soleil?
I hope so.
Is that the point?
Well, that's, that's an idea we, we have, we're kind of showing that here.
Like an ivy.
The idea that the pergola would support vegetation. I don't know that it is wise for the owners to allow vegetation to grow through the brick, because that might.
Chokes, yeah, chokes the house.
Yeah, so, but we do hope that it grows all over that pergola, maybe we could show the, the southern elevation, the cool side, yeah. So here from the cool side, you can see this pergola, it's a really lightweight structure, it's just meant for the. And we cut it down off to the side, so opportunities for hanging plants.
And the other, the north facade.
So this is all just.
So you can see eventually through this brise soleil.
And just behind.
And also providing privacy to the neighbor. The neighbor that is in the north, so that's why we also keep these.
So then how high is the parapet wall?
It's, it's four, is it four feet from wall itself, from the level, yeah, it's four feet. And then the, on the other side, it's just a railing, we, we filled this in with, with the brise soleil on this side for privacy, the idea is that the privacy for the neighbors on the other side, not so much for any activity on the roof. Same with this, as it is extending.
But you're talking about the neighbors to the north are, are separated from you by existing native vegetation.
Yeah, there are some trees there.
So you're one way to the north in terms of privacy, and to the south, you're very open, you have a lot of, you know, well, not floor to ceiling, but you have some, looks like some eight-foot windows in here, or glasses or doors to the south.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's two oh two, if you're looking for it.
Also, we consider that the north facade is more, more close to the neighbor than on the, to the south. The guy is more direct relation to the, to the neighbor that is on the north side.
Fifty's on fifty's, yeah.
Okay, so is the garage attached or not attached, I'm not clear. It is.
What is this?
Not attached.
Okay, there seems to be something, a fence, maybe.
Yeah, I think that's what that is, because this is confusing from this, this perspective. From one oh three, it's a little confusing, it looks like it's attached.
Curves around, you can see it in plan. I think you're just seeing it from behind.
So you, I was just gonna say, so your next step, right, is to go to the, which board is it that you're, you're saying zoning or zoning? So I'm good, I'm, I'm anticipating and want to hear from the zoning board. So I'm, I'm good with this as it is presented to us right now, but then it'll be presented again.
So this is public discussion, does the public want to comment on this? Anyone want to come up and take a look at the diagram and comment on?
There are neighbors in the audience, no.
Okay. So really, I think it's inappropriate for us to pass on. I think we're giving you our comment. And so everything is really subject to what ZBA does, it's beyond our scope, right? So since the question came up, maybe we should let ZBA address this, and then when you modify, if necessary, your plans, then it'll be more appropriate for us to comment on that. Okay.
But as, as it's designed, if, if we're, we pass ZBA with this design, slight modifications.
Well, you'll still come back.
We will be coming back to present.
And we want to just see the landscape plan. On a survey.
Yeah.
Some good renderings on the other sides of, of the house, instead of just the front, that would be nice, too.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. So do you have any questions, Abash?
Good.
Okay. Thank you. See you again.
Yes.
Thank you, do you want these back? I think you may take these.
Uh, yeah.
Yes. I got you, okay. All right, we'll do that. Okay, I'll take the motion from somebody to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll take, take another motion to table this until rescheduled after their appearance with the ZBA.
I move that we table twenty-five Black Point Road.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
So now we're gonna move to the consent agenda matters. One is listed, but there, there are two now, so I'll discuss the ad here before we go and move to, to open it, et cetera. Twenty-five Henry Street was in front of us before, and it's in the historic area, and they were had, they had requested that they want to put in a PVC fence.
Oh, yes.
They've modified their application to a cedar, and I think it's gonna be three feet high, they've said. So I'd like to consider both of those, that and twenty Washington Street, which is for a swimming pool and landscaping, and I think. Looked at, you looked at it, Drew?
Yeah, no, not, not for the consent.
Bethany and I did.
Yeah.
So we thought it was appropriate for the consent, right? So I'm gonna take a motion for us to vote on those two items, one on the agenda and one, I mean, just added for twenty Washington Avenue and twenty-five Henry Street.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. And all in favor of approving these two items, please signify by saying yes.
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 Okay. And now we'll close the consent item agenda, I'll move to do that, can I have a second?
I, I don't think we have to open.
We don't have to close it? Okay.
Or prove it.
So we've approved it, right?
Okay, yeah.
So now we'll move on to old business. And that first applicant is fifty-five Howard Street. Anyone here to represent fifty-five Howard? Okay, so I'll move that we table fifty-five Howard. Can I get a second?
One second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just a quick question, do you have, for the consent agenda for us to sign or no?
Carrie, everything you want us to sign?
Okay.
Okay. So we'll keep moving on, though.
Okay.
All right, so the next online is twenty-nine Robinson Boulevard. Is anyone here to talk about?
Solar panels.
Solar panels.
This is the third time nobody showed for twenty-nine.
Okay.
Take it off of. Or do they just keep reapplying? Is that how it works?
Okay.
They must not know they have to come.
Well, I think they do, you remember the last time we mentioned that they were, that we were gonna study solar panels?
Yeah.
And what, what I looked at, they didn't show the location of the panels yet in the package. So we might as well table it or remove it from the agenda and have them re-approve, reapply after, is it determination whether solar panels can be on the front of the house or not.
Motion to remove twenty-nine Robison.
I'll second that.
The.
Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So the next presenter is one sixty-one Division Street, is anyone here for Division Street?
Back, remember?
Looking at the windows.
I don't think so. I didn't remember saying that.
Yeah.
It's in the tape.
Really?
Sure.
Oh, yeah. I thought that's why we had to go and look at it.
Right.
I watched it, so, but we can handle it.
No.
I, I feel that we don't need a cable.
I did a really brief report, I think the way we left it was that there was an opportunity to potentially go inside to verify some dates of the windows and that sort of thing.
Yeah.
But that didn't work out, but I went, did a site visit anyway, and I did go onto the property and up the side that isn't encased with wood. And my impression was that there have been so many changes to those windows, the sashes themselves, and also potentially the location that to be that strict about the not moving of the window and the changing of the look, to me, this is a house that's been significantly altered.
Right.
Even though it's, it is a contributing building.
I agree.
But with, with a lot of alteration. And these windows are on the side, sides that are fairly visible, so I would recommend that you.
You're not holding it up.
Then on ceremony here and.
All right.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll. I'll make we approve it without them being here.
We can.
Yes.
And they came and they did their, you know. Yeah.
Not made any changes from that application.
All right, so I'll make the motion. Or do I have to give the address? Division Street, one sixty one Division. I'll second.
Okay, all in favor of approving as requested?
All right.
This this one that is next is the fence that you just did.
Okay, so twenty five Henry's already dressed. Be polite. It's a new business. We have the presentation of five Vickers. Those are much better.
Oh, I can't work with that. I'll do this. How's that?
Someone's taking a nap. It's unfair.
Oh, my goodness.
That's a cheap trick.
Oh, my goodness.
That's the best they feel.
What's his name?
James.
Great name.
James. Or you can't be that person.
Yeah.
So so you've seen this before and it hasn't really changed at all. So just as a refresher, this is a sort of a mid-century modern house, not in the historic history. It's basically just a long way ahead. This is the this side facing Harrison faces three streets. So this faces three streets. That is three of the street. And they basically basically want to just make some modifications to that on the change that we decided. There's nothing here that you're looking at that is original to the original house. The siding has all been changed by previous owners and the windows have all been changed by previous owners that are moving, so it's not that it's here at this. For the origin.
Thank you.
So it's a rather typical site. Were found by three streets. And there's only one neighbor. And really, it's not much of a yard going back. So this is the existing house right here. And what we're proposing to do is add on really the only direction one. So if you look at this house, the existing house, you can see that there's a huge overhang on the side that faces the district, which is about six feet. So we want to incorporate that into the house. So we're sort of taking that, making it indoor space and then adding on two small additions here. One is to create which the house doesn't really have, at least it does have a front door. And then this this addition here is to add on sort of an office space. And because the site slopes dramatically from here to there, about ten to twelve feet, dramatic pitch, it's a typical site. In addition to having three street boundaries, we wanted to create two terrace areas here. They're all in brass. Create at least some flat area because they like to do a very small swimming pool. It's around the lower areas of the main. So that will be surrounded by a team. We can be given by vegetation. The only other major feature is there's usually a staircase at this end to go down into the basement. So get access to the basement, a little bit of light down there. The other end of the house, the only thing we're doing here is adding on a curbless structure. We're setting it as two solid walls on the side. If there's already a little bit of a deck area there, wanted to create some more privacy because at this end of the house is the master bedroom and bathroom. So to sort of update the house because you're not too crazy about the sort of mid-century modern pride. What we decided to do is to rip off the the overhangs on the side.
Yeah.
And to sort of streamline the house a little bit more. So this is the side that faces Harrison Street. So that's that area where we get the leaning point, which would be a sort of a flat roof area. We connect this to sort of the office space there. So the whole thing would be recided in, you know, cedar shingles, red shingle roof, and then the vertical side is red cedar. So it's all going to go. The trim is all red cedar, so we'll all be sort of going very natural. The windows would be black, Anderson windows, just in black. This is the side of the street. We're sort of hit a big sliding where it opens up out of those terraces. This is that opposite end. It's downer on the other end, and that's that sort of curbless structure. So it's sort of solid walls to the side, more open to this end, the sort of curb structure. And then this is the rear, the temporary rear. It faces the neighbor, the only neighbor. And that neighbor, although very close to the property line, their their house is set far away from the property between the property and the house is a swimming pool. So the two swimming pools are sort of near each other. We do have a landscape plan. So what they're proposing to do is to leave the driveway area, park area where it is changed into more of a a paver that, you know, not grass. Would be sort of the stone dining area here outside of those major French doors. And the the rest of it is just to create some walks up to the stoops for the for the doors that would be worn to the back. So the exterior materials are either slate or limestone, sort of in that gray color. Then around the swimming pool area, there's extensive screen, mostly in the five to six foot range. So the general appearance of the street is sort of like this. And the guy who did the rendering didn't really even put these up full height because you can't when if you put all the plants in it, well, I can't see it against the houses. But just to get you an idea of how much screening, the sort of layers of screening they wanted to appear. So this would be like a house looks like. That's sort of that office end, one story connection piece of the existing house down here. Questions?
Just one that I have. I've seen that your pool is set back eleven feet from the side from side yard.
Yes.
So that's I think it's fifteen feet, isn't it? You do have a variance.
We're like fourteen variance. Yes, no, this is all.
Which which street is that pictured right there? That's
This street is Harrison.
That's Harrison. Okay.
This is Vickers.
Okay. Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
What is this a detail of? It's a wall section. This. But and then there's two by eight joints. This is two by eight. So that Joyce is sitting on that ledge. But then there's subfloor.
We're on page six.
Yeah, I'm just looking at your wall section. It doesn't have anything to do with.
Yeah.
But we're just a little confused about this. I don't want to waste too much time, but.
Oh, it's because there's a, yeah, that's a confusing thing because what it's doing is it's it's drawing, it's showing a section to this area right in here because this little pantry bar area is at this level. And this floor is down.
I got you.
So it's showing two floors.
The intersection. Scratching my head a little bit.
I I I I thought it was an excellent presentation, Scott. I think the house is the new house is very handsome. I love the before and after. The after is just nice and crisp and handsome and nice. Yeah. So I'll make the motion for five Victor Street.
Second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Take care.
Jesus, thank you.
Okay, so the next one is twenty one Lincoln. Is anyone here to present twenty one Lincoln? Oh, here's when you get a chance.
Here's Scott.
Great, though. Great, thank you.
Okay.
I know. This goes with it.
Yes. Okay, I think we're ready. So who's presenting for the fully loss?
John Circuit, Lieutenant Mador.
Okay.
Basically, they propose new residents on the eleven thousand sort of a lot, new variances, everything is forming a lot on either side. There's a home on either side. It's a small big lot across the street. I believe in this package should have some renderings that are done. The house, the house is basically tied. You have a pool, a deck in the back, but there's really not much not much here in the way. Random house that will fit in surrounding properties. The one thing I do have to note is that you're not rendering the shingles or labels with the wrong color. They're not already shaped like this. Those are
Oh, sorry.
Signing would be and that is how we tried to render. The roof. Resawn shape. And the trim is just exactly the first effect.
It's autumn tan.
Which one?
Yes.
This one. And which one?
This one.
Oh, I said, I can. It's good.
But but it's basically your typical home. We do have a fence across, you know, across the front. And for someone hoping to discuss on the fencing material of the door. Like as designed for the defense because of the pools.
That's right.
So do we have? Am I missing the landscaping plan or is there?
We did not prepare one.
Where is Lincoln Avenue? Up in New York.
Lincoln, Lincoln Street?
No, it's Avenue.
Is it Avenue? I know where Nino, but I know it's. I thought I thought it was Lincoln Street.
Oh, it's this street. Okay, whatever.
It makes a difference in my head because I know all the streets.
Oh, and it says Lincoln Street on this one.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, well, those are whatever.
Looking for the pool. Oh, this is the pool. Right.
We've been looking for a landscape plan. So we, yeah.
We see the render.
We do get these.
Here they are.
Those are proper.
There you go.
So, yeah.
Step here. And the neighbors. How close are the neighbors? If if someone's up on this deck here?
We're interested in the So here's the thing, we don't have the landscaping. Right. So so we want to protect privacy on both sides of the fence, right? So particularly around the pool because people are not really clothed. So if you so we don't know what's on on your neighbor's side. Right? And and so we just want to make sure that there's enough screening between the two.
In order for us to approve that, we need the actual landscape plan. It can be and it can be on a survey, can it?
Yeah, you can put it on a survey. So so I'm going to make a motion. And my motion is that we prove the construction. So that particularly since it's modular, they can get to work. And that that we don't improve the landscaping plan until it's submitted to us and reviewed. Okay, so the only thing in question really is how that roof deck is going to be dealt with.
For privacy.
Privacy.
So that if if people are up here, they can't look down on the neighbors and spy on them or whatever.
So I made a motion. I'll entertain the second on that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome home, Mr. Fuller. You're welcome.
On the paper that I give us.
Yeah. So our next presenter is from one fifty two Division Street. Is there anybody here for that to address? Okay, gentlemen, please come on up. Okay, gentlemen, please come on up. Good evening.
We've actually, um, we'll set this up to go. We've actually been here before a while ago and the project had a different look to it and worked with CBA. Uh, for the last six months or so. The CBA for the grant application.
There you go.
One fifty two Division Street, um, original house completed to date is eighteen forty five.
Twenty two.
Forty two.
And. Currently, the house is, um, it was used as sort of a boarding house sort of in the sixties and seventies. It's the owner's. Uh, purchase house years back looking at the territory. To modeling the house. It's currently flat and aluminum siding and it's cut up on the inside. Um, there's a bunch of additions you can see from. Focus on existing first. You can see that with. Uh, has additions to the house.
Thank you.
So. The, um, so the, you have letters of support from the neighbors on both sides currently that we had. Uh, through the CBA application process. And like I said, we have a group with CBA. The house is conforming in terms of its GFA. Twenty eight hundred and seventy one square feet, which is conforming for this lot size, fourteen hundred and seventy square feet on the first floor. And fourteen hundred square feet on the second floor. For the proposed house, uh, what we're, what we're doing is restoring that part of the house facing the street. Um, in, you know, pretty much as you can see from the existing, there could be a range of proposed. Elevations on top of each other so you can compare.
Okay.
Uh, so the existing is always on the top. And the proposed is on the bottom of these images. So, um, the additions as we go, as I mentioned, we're restoring the front of the house. Um, the plan of the house is remaining, um, as most village houses, it it starts with sort of a small sitting room. And then kind of a little room that's got a fireplace. And then what we're proposing to do is we put in an addition, um. They, uh, two small additions, eighty four square feet and fifty one square feet on the back of the house. And this allowed us to clean up some spaces and and move the kitchen to the back of the house. Which is what your, you know, our goal was to have the kitchen open up to the backyard. To the back of the house. Um, as, uh, as you can see, it was a new gate with a chaise. That opens up to the backyard with a small swimming pool and. Cottage in the back. The first time we came here, I, I'm sure you've seen the application, I'm gonna call. We had a a larger, we we changed actually the way the roof. Um, we came here the first time, we changed the way the roof works. So we changed. It's kind of dug into the framing and how the existing layers work in terms just the roof line so that there's less volume on the side yards. So when we, um, went back to the CBA, we got approval for a significantly less, um, pyramid violation.
Okay, existing.
The, uh, the proposed materials, we are proposing utilizing low end. Oh, sorry. Sorry.
We can hear you.
So we're proposing with our windows and doors, we're proposing low end windows and doors, a very high quality, um. Good looking traditional window with value, good maintenance, you know, excellent thermal properties. We're very interested in making sure this is the house and it's, it's for its next forty or fifty years, it's much more energy efficient than it was in the last forty years. So the, uh, so windows will be insulated glass, uh, light of light. We're proposing painted white clapboard siding, um, painted white windows. Yeah, cedar shingle roof. There'll be some of the painted shutters on the front and we called out the color, um, on the, um, the elevations that we presented in the package. Yeah, there's a, there's a.
The shutters?
Yeah.
Are they gonna stay of being red?
No, they're not.
Gray shutters.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah. They're going to sort of a grayish blue, like a, like a kind of a warm gray.
It would be. Probably even better if you just. Lost the shutters entirely.
We would.
Is that a, is that an option?
I think, I think far off, I said, no, me personally, I would finally.
I I I don't know about your client owners.
We're just trying to be careful.
I understand.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that, of course, you know, whether they love shutters or not. But they're not old, they're not original, they're just decorative.
Yeah.
The, as, as you can see, the ones upstairs wouldn't do a very good job closing up the window openings.
Yeah.
Nor would the ones downstairs. So rather than trying to figure out how to make them look even better, you might consider. Just, just.
I think, yeah, I think it would be a better location.
It would.
Yeah.
And you'd save yourself a little bit of money on the budget in the offering. It's just, it's just that is not contributing.
Yeah, I would, I would agree that it would be better with, without shutters.
Yeah, that's good.
What's it say, we're replacing?
Obviously, just to look at it wider. Yeah.
These are wider. But they have letters on them, but I don't know where.
Yeah, I don't know where the key is.
So getting rid of a chimney, a chimney?
I'm sorry.
We're looking for the window keys.
Yeah, so the keys are on the floor plan, uh, right inside, they're all red letters.
Is this?
The board generally has a problem with replacing.
Yeah.
Editions.
So I guess on your, what you're. Supposedly retain the windows on the front side.
Again, these are.
Well, just saying, just, just the actual, the fenestration.
Yeah.
Uh, the. Place of the. Window openings.
Yeah.
As well as the window elements themselves.
Yeah.
They look like you're retaining that on the front, but totally changing those on the side.
So we are, what we do, yes, we're keeping the same size in the front with, again, as Michael said, it's a very high end.
Oh, so you are.
Divided light, we're replacing them. It's a high end divided light insulated glass, thin mutton boards, they're gonna be divided as you see.
We've had this discussion many times. That's generally a no no.
I say, yeah, I know, I know you have, but I think there's been many approved or.
No, they have.
Not recently.
No. Because these are old rot, kind of rotting wood windows.
That's what, that's what everyone says, but.
You don't like to generalize about that. It's helpful to go and look at these.
Yeah.
Often, one person's rotty is somebody else's promising little wooden window that can be.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's the usual response to this. There's no question that a modern window is newer than an old window. And if it's thermal paint, it's like probably more energy efficient. However, however.
Yeah.
You know, there are very. Viable alternatives such as repairing the old windows.
Yeah, they're replacing everyone's.
Installing interior storm. Which preserve the appearance of the old houses, you know, which this is. And provide some considerable amount of heat protection. And so that, you know, that, that's a, that's an approach.
It was a bit, you know, working with preparing, replacing.
Okay, I mean, I think that would be a big deal here because this, you're, you're doing a lot of other wonderful improvements, like the aluminum siding is going, I guess, like.
Yeah, I just wanted to, yeah, I just wanted to highlight the board that if you look at the existing photographs. It's, it's, as Zachary knows too, and and some of you, and Bill from the board, you know, it's really a mishmash, it's vinyl siding, vinyl patient board, it's the same thing. We really feel that we are doing a major improvement instead of just a circularity.
For sure. So.
Absolutely, absolutely, you are.
Questioning that at all.
Absolutely true, but kind of consistent with your, yours and your, your client's intention to sort of pull this. Get, get this one back again. Uh, would be to, you know, realize that if, if these window sashes are, you know, we could take a site visit to confirm that. But if they're, if they are actually surviving, then they're valuable and worth, they contribute to the historical, you know, uh. Right, interest of the house and 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 are one. You know, one of the few features that visually you can say, oh, those are old, whereas all this other material that you're talking about is.
I think if the board feels strongly about this, just to stay.
Yeah, sure.
Making calls. This isn't shared, because we're just really anxious to move this forward.
Sure, sure, of course.
Yeah, make sure that you guys are comfortable with doing it. We'll, we'll end it to preserving, repairing, replacing those existing windows on the front. Probably have to rebuild some of the sashes, but we'll, we'll, you know, work with what's there and do everything possible.
That would be great.
Work at the storm like those on the inside. Yeah, we understand the issue. We are also replacing the kind that the fences, um, that will rebuild those exactly the way they are.
Great.
On the, the fence on the side in the back, it's going to be, we're going to put white painted.
Yeah, I looked at all the. All along.
Um, is there a fence there now?
There is not a fence there now.
Oh, wait.
But there was, right now, as.
That's, that's the front. He's talking about the back.
Oh, okay.
As a concrete driveway, there's a lot of gravel and hopefully we're making a major improvement to the site for you too. And as you probably know, we are replacing the concrete drivers, the grass.
Algae.
Grass papers, uh, just grass papers taking away all the concrete on there.
Great.
So definitely, I think that's gonna be kind of nice, you know? With the grass good for the drainage. We're just trying to make sure that we're able to deal with our drainage in a responsible way so it's more courteous.
Yeah, it's good.
Yeah, and a new IAS system in the back.
Great.
For those of you who recall, when we came back, the chairman, were you the chairman, sir? Yeah, you were not, you're actually, and, and when you were your last. You recall that, that the house was proposed, you were asking a lot more. Scale back three times with the zoning board and funding, we just went for the GFA. I mean, aesthetically also, I think, you know, it's. Sometimes the smaller, the smaller volume will be better, as I'm sure you all.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I have a question about, uh, page A two O two.
Yeah.
You have the, um, existing on top and the proposed on the bottom. By the way, thank you very much for doing side by side. Proposed and existing. We always ask people to do that, but they rarely do. So thank you really very much for doing that. Um, on the proposed. It looks like the new, uh, the ridge line of the new addition is exactly the same as the ridge line for the old house. And, uh, we often ask that you lower the new. Uh, the height of the new part of the house to make it subservient to the old part of the house.
And, and the, the, yes, the ridge, the ridge line is, you will not see that except for the, the back door and the neighbors, you will not see that. But we, just to note, the ridge line, I mean, the, the break lines, we are, are low as the existing and the doors in the back going up to the back. On the second floor are actually like six foot four doors, you know, so we've gone down actually as low as we possibly can there. But we actually just need, we need room also to get ductwork between the old and the new, we're trying to make this nicely efficient house. And there's like no space to get work, so we need that kind of as a chase to get. And I, and I think aesthetically, you're gonna get all there, you know, see the existing house, which is this massive addition, to make things work better. Trying to keep it simple on the back, so it has line, this line in the back, which works with the spaces, to get all the spaces to work properly. Usually it's a little technical there. So we did, we originally had more visible from the side. Solid with all of that to the back of the main range. And we actually brought it much, much further down, but, but, but that was the way, that the plane height on side is the target, as long as it's six three. So it's others, most of the spaces work and to not have a, kind of a funny, um, uh, sentiment. Just being an architect, you conserve that overall, you know, aesthetics, just keeping it simple, um, is always best, right? And well, to, obviously, you know, that these are, these are really 2D and when they stand there, you don't even see that roof, you know, so, you know.
Great, great, okay. Does it matter that there? Are, are two chimneys and now there's only one?
Um, we, we did take, we are taking one away. They're not being, it's being used. Um, we, we are taking one of those away.
Is that like a historical significance?
Be difficult to. Say.
Do you?
An old house, very old.
Yeah.
We're leaving the one in the front, that was the main one for the ceiling and fireplace. Yeah, the one in the back, I have a feeling was kind of an add on later on when they started, when they needed another furnace or something.
Probably just a flow, yeah.
Yeah.
So how many fireplaces are in the house?
There's really just the one.
Okay.
Yeah.
In the front.
Uh, and there was.
What?
That again was.
I was just gonna say.
I, I'm sorry I'm late, um, to, to join. Uh, yes, there's actually no working fireplaces, uh, in the house at all at the moment. Um, they've all been, um, blocked up over the years. Uh, there's one, obviously, we want to restore and make, make working, which is the main one. Uh, it also needs a lot of repair work. The first, the chimneys are very vulnerable to, I think, falling over, which, uh, it's, it desperately needs to be attended to. Um, but the second chimney does not even have anything. There's no, um. There's nothing below it, basically, within the, within the house. So that's why we just want to remember.
I think there's a flow, I think it was added for oil.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So on the west elevation, you have a second floor deck there that you're proposing?
We do, and, uh, we're, they're only adding a small bit to the. First floor, uh, we are, we are, yes, the answer is yes, we are proposing that. And it kind of ties into the trellis in the back and, um. It's very shallow. It's, um, it's just a way to, they're, they're kind of, you know, they're not big, big rooms up there. And, and they have children and we thought it would be kind of nice. It's also certainly great for fire escapes, you know, where you can walk out of the room. They're not big enough to furnish. And they're really not gonna be.
Oh, okay, so it's, it's not going to be used as a entertainment space or anything?
It's not at all, the rooms are very large.
Door.
And ten.
The shade structure for this, for the area below. The rooms feel this way.
That's a lot.
Can it be seen by the, is there a neighbor to the back of the house?
Way in the back, but there's also a cottage in the way.
Right, I know, cottage, yeah.
Even if they see it, we do not see it, see it as being. Obviously, but.
Oh, wow.
But really, it is, it is a long way, it's a, it's a long way to the back. A long way to the back.
Just in case it, just in case it helps, we, we have letters of support from both our, um, adjacent neighbors on either side.
Yeah.
At, um. One fifty six and one forty eight Division Street. We can send you those letters if that'd be helpful.
So this is.
Oh, I'd also like to compliment you on the fact, I hope it's still true, that you are restoring and keeping the outhouse?
Yes, I have a photo of that, actually, we are.
Good, I am thrilled, I am thrilled. We have saved quite a few outhouses around town. And so we can add this to our list. Yeah.
So, so just to go, go back to the second floor balcony. Narrow is, is, is a subjective word. Is it eight feet, two inches that's covering the, the, the deck below? The patio below?
Do you see that in the plan, like that depth of that there? The deck is six foot, uh, six foot seven to the outside, so it's about six foot four.
It's not historically correct.
Like a motel.
Yeah.
I think that, that sort of roof forms.
Well, I, I mean, just, just to have the, um, would you consider not having that, uh? I mean, it just, not that, well, I'm not talking about the roof, I'm talking about the, uh.
Porch.
Porch or whatever you want to say, because it really doesn't, you know, go with this. Style home, you know.
So what, 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 what we're talking about, which part?
The, the second floor, the second floor step out there.
The deck. Yeah, the balconies.
It would be very, if I could jump in, it would be very awkward, almost not to have it because of the first and second floor, how we cut things back. It's a way to kind of.
It's just not part of the.
It were fenced differently, maybe with different materials.
I don't know, I'm just saying it's not. Part of the start of the house, like you.
That's.
Right.
You're located on the back.
You must have, they took you down.
It's the backyard. You know, it's the backyard and, um.
No, I, I, I know what you're saying.
Yeah, you do. And I, and I think it's really going to help. If we took it apart, if you saw the floor plan, the shake jobs and. It gets kind of messy. This is where cleaning that up and kind of making one clean line across the back there. Put the trellis and gives it some shading. Yeah, I think that we're intentionally on the back of the house facing the backyard.
Of course.
Trying to recreate a new.
No, of course it would be, and of course you'd put it at its back. I get, I get that, but I'm just saying it's not in keeping with the historical character of the house.
But can I just also add that what we have today is not in keeping with the historical character of the house because there's very strange additions done at the back of the house. Over the years, which is definitely not original to eighteen forty two, and we're trying to tidy up and clean up all of that so that this looks vastly better.
You, you, um, and you are, you know, you are doing that. But I, I just feel that, that having that, uh, back, that deck just doesn't go.
It's, it's really to allow a little bit more space down below. Um, in fact, we weren't originally planning to do it, it's just the Z B A wouldn't allow us to have a, uh, any additional square footage. So we, uh, that's how we ended up with that.
Plane height is six foot seven.
I was, there's another thing that we talked about was the shutters. Or feels that they're not restored, uh, with the structure. Encourage us to consider removing the shutter.
Sorry, I can't quite hear you, Michael, you saying that, that someone's pointed out that shutters are not historic?
That's correct, so there was discussion to see if you would consider removing the shutters.
Not even have them on there, like no shutters.
That's interesting, I, I thought you'd be telling us, we would never be allowed to remove them ever, so I'm actually, um, I didn't realize that. I thought that was historic.
Apparently they're not part of the original structure nor their, um, sort of style harbor or older structures.
I, I, yeah, I'll have to discuss it with my wife, but we can certainly, we could certainly consider that.
Well, we're trying, pardon me, but we're kind of trying to keep things moving here, so the board agrees that they're not necessary. I think aesthetically, that would be great, not having them sort of exactly in particular in the void. So, um, we'd rather not hold off anything for you, but in case you discuss if you can jump on.
Certainly we can, we can hold off on that. We think that if, um, we think it's just architecturally, the house alone, nostalgia or challenge, sort of overwhelms. Especially.
The board agrees with that. I think, Michael, I agree with that.
But it's, but we can, we can, you know, if you, if you feel strong, we can certainly, you know, um.
You can tell, uh, that they weren't, um, you, you know, part of the original design in that if you shut them, they're not gonna cover the window.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. They're just, they're just to look nice.
Yes.
So returning to the second deck. What is this under? C three and C?
Those are custom doors that would be made custom, but they're kind of unique, you know, but they're ma- they're made custom to kind of work with.
They're all low, they're all low in doors and windows, every single one.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just saying, what is this gray area by underneath?
No, it's, um, horizontal stripes.
What's that?
The horizontals.
Oh, oh, that's, that's, that's the exterior, that's the exterior shower in the plan, you see a little step. But these doors actually would fold back, so from the backyard, when it's not used, you really wouldn't see that. Those doors would be folding back in, they're just little cedar slats, you know, cedar.
So it's an outdoor shower?
Yeah.
On the second floor?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't see it, that looks like a.
From here.
Yeah, see.
Eyes, there it is.
Yeah.
So the window is into the, and there's the deck.
Yeah.
So this is a skinny six foot wide deck?
Yeah.
With a shower? Six and a half, right?
I'm just facing a very private backyard.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I like the, like.
We could also, I do too, just honestly, we could make those. Panels that would come down in the off-season, the, the shower, they could, they're just meant to be like little cedar privacy screens. So we could actually, if, you know, this house. Have them where they, they would pop together, then, I mean, they're only in the summertime. And then take them away for the, for the fall, the winter and the spring, you know?
So, so do you want, sir, would you like to wait and, and come back after you speak with your spouse about the shutters? Are you? I mean, it's not a major issue, I think the issue is more the, the back deck and the.
Back deck and, and the roof line.
Right.
The roof line is, because that's. What it does now, just the volume of the back is, is what you look for in terms of the relationship of the extension. But there have been several, I guess, sort of, that's all been added to on a number of occasions, but. But how that, the, the, the difference in the roof line is what preserves the volume of the front of the house as being the original.
Exactly.
And by, by, you know, elevating that to the existing ridge line, you lose, you lose that. And from the side, the back roof slope only goes halfway. To where it goes now, it kind of stops and goes out. And you kind of, you lose how distinct that front portion is.
From the side.
From the, yeah.
Exactly. And, and, and also just to reiterate, if you look at these existing photographs, you know, it really, it's all really a mishmash of, of things. I mean, we're keeping, we're maintaining that, but you can see it's just a little.
Lot of add-ons, lot of add-ons, yeah.
And as you know, we're kind of really simplify it and, and keep it clean and simple gables and the, and the roof line there, so. And as Zachary says, that's how we're able to, you know, we're just, just getting headroom at the sides, at the, at the grave lines.
Even with the ridge, where, where it is, the plate height is six three, or something like that. The doors are six four, the plate line is six seven, or something like that, yeah, one six four.
Even if. I mean, you now have a full attic above this second floor.
It's not, um, we do now, it's very, very, very small.
Well, you have an attic, okay, there, there is an attic, you may, if you have to walk sideways, but.
Yeah.
It's above all that, okay. So all I'm thinking is, even if you were able to drop the roof line down. And then bring it back up again, you know, at least there would be a break, because as it is now from the.
It's very monolithic.
Yeah, it just carries straight out from the ridge.
Right.
So the advantage, even though what's happening down on the lower level is sort of a mishmash, as you said. It still doesn't overwhelm the original house, which is up front. So if you could drop that roof line.
So if we could have sort of a, a, a sort of a, a section where me, I just, you drop that. And then, and kind of create that into the roof and then pop back up, that would be more.
Yeah, at least you would set the front apart from the back and, and visually.
Pardon me, you're talking about maybe some sort of break here?
Right in there, yeah.
Yeah, we could do, you know, again, we have to get some duct work and stuff going through there, but we could, we could try to do something there.
Drop it down a couple of feet and then come back up again.
Yeah, yeah.
Go complete to the ridge, how much do you have now?
Uh, I have it right here. I, I'm not now, I mean, I can tell you.
Proposed.
Yeah, I can tell you, it's, um. So I think, I think we could do that. So right now, we have.
I didn't know, yeah.
He does have good eyes.
So you see this.
Five foot seven.
Yeah, so that's would become, oh, I'm sorry, go down here if you please, to the, the proposed here, you can see.
Five foot.
That's that line coming down there, and, and we're going even lower than that, that, that break, you could see how lower.
It's a five foot seven to the highest point right now.
Yeah.
Well. So, but I, but I do think having a section.
Five foot seven plus eleven inches.
Yeah.
Keep it, so if you could drop this, six foot eight, down a couple of feet.
Plenty of room.
Well, this is existing, but he, here you're saying, this is a proposed, right? You're saying, drop this section down a couple of feet.
Yeah.
Right, before it comes back up again.
Before it comes into the roof.
Doesn't have to be drastic, like three feet.
No, no, but, but, but a couple.
Sure.
We make a contrast.
Yeah, I, I feel, I feel strongly.
We, we can make that work.
We can make that work.
Great, great.
If, may I ask the board if things don't go well, is that, that, that could be, if, if you're okay with everything, I'll send you to. Submit drawings that, that, that could be part of a condition, we would submit drawings that, that reflect that.
Is that something we could put on the?
Without coming back for a meeting and.
Yeah, that's, is that something we can put on the, um, consent agenda? If they.
No, I think.
You know, we could do it, actually, we could do it before you even rotate it up, we could get, we could get this in.
No, I think that.
I think so, but, I think, sorry, if you want to do it remotely, that's a different issue. But I, I think we should, you should appear before.
And, and think about, think about the, that, uh, porch there.
Really, because that's, it hasn't been harped on, but I can tell you that it's. Even the diagram of it, somehow it seems so incongruous to the house, just the number of rails implied and all that other stuff. Um, just if, you know.
And I think we, we need to make sure we all understand about the windows. That, because you had said, I, I felt at the end, it's not the end, but midway there, you said the front. And I think Zach was talking about all the windows. Am I right, Zach?
On the side walls too.
Yeah. He doesn't.
It wasn't just the front.
It isn't just the front, yeah.
No, because the side.
And I don't want you thinking, that's what he's saying.
Yeah, ob- obviously, this doesn't apply to areas of new construction, which are modern windows and they should match.
They don't need fire code and egress size.
See, we can't, yeah.
No, I think, I think you need to look at.
In the original house, they're pre-existing non-conformity.
We need to look at them.
There, you're not required to change them. But I don't know, I'm not a code. But I mean.
They, they went into the demonstration, I think.
Yeah.
You change the location of the windows and put new ones in. I'm just saying that the original windows that are in the front part of the house, both the front facade and the sides of that original structure. If they're there, I don't think.
Only the original structure.
Yes.
Not the, not the one, not the add-ons.
Not the.
Right, not the add-ons, okay.
See.
Right.
So, we're, we're going to ask them to come back with the, a period.
Mm-hmm.
Up there.
But to be clear on what, what the board is.
Uh, yeah, you know, we were, I mean, the, the front of the house, it, it's just that, you know. You know, they, Alistair and Asia have four children, I, even though it's allowed, I don't think you'd want a bedroom that doesn't form the even, I know Chris Albert would not want that either. And we also are trying to make. You know, I, I don't, I don't know, it's, it's the side of the house, it's a long concrete driveway now, and nobody sees it except for the next door neighbor. And you see how close their house is to it? Nobody is really seeing this, and you can see where, where it's tasteful, but we're trying to get some more light in the house and make the second floor window safe and keep it all cohesive here. So. And there's, there are garbage windows right now, and they've got all the storms that's on the outside, and you don't even see the divisions of the lights anyway, you know, it's like.
Right.
I mean, I think we're, I'd be fine with the front of the house, but, you know, we'd really like to do what we. What we planned here by just cleaning it up, and you see it, it all works. Granted, it doesn't look just like that, to me, that, these are not proportionally moved, it can be enlarged, it could be made into.
And certainly by constructing a large additional. To get that. But the objective of this board is not only to enable you to, you know, achieve something that's useful and beautiful. But it's also about preserving what's there that is of historical value. That's why this house. Got included in this National Register document in nineteen ninety-four. It has certain features that are of historical value, so it's not a blank slate. So I understand that the architectural profession would like to see things symmetrical, would like to, you know, do its thermal retention, et cetera, et cetera. But it's an old house first and foremost, before it's heat sensitive, before it's symmetrical, before anything. It is a listed building with certain features.
Right, we get, yeah, we all like.
Alright, so, so changing the fenestration, which is not only the actual sashes themselves, which a guy like me uses to date the house. Which if they're discarded in two thousand and twenty-two, they're no longer there.
These are not eighteen forty-two windows, for sure.
I'm really the only guy that could probably determine that.
That's what I was gonna say, I think he needs to go, and it might not even be a problem.
But, so there are ways of achieving what you and your clients would like to do. So if you're concerned about heat loss, first of all, living in an old house is not the best way to approach conserving heat.
And how about Zach?
You have to accept that as.
How about if we make an appointment and you go? Let's just do that, and then we'll go from what you're talking about, then we'll go to the next.
There are ways of achieving. I would, I appreciate your, your thoughts, but I would, I would say that I'm very certain, I grew up here.
Yeah.
And I am very certain that, that this is historic, certainly because of the eighteen forty-two, because of the area it is and because of the front of the house. I really don't think, when you look at these aluminum, uh, aluminum storm.
Right.
Windows on the outside of the side of the house and the house siding, you know, that when the store people came around, I don't think that, that's, that was a basic, a big historic flag to them. I think it was the front, the fenestration, the front door, and by the way, we're, the front door is, we're keeping the same, the side lights we're keeping, we're just gonna be scraping and caulking and putting and all that kind of stuff, but. So I would argue that, that there's nothing too historical about the side, the side lights when they're along the concrete driveway, you really don't see.
Okay, so, so let, let's, let's be clear, I think, I think Zach has been very diplomatic here. We're constrained by federal law, not by our opinion. This is not an aesthetic comment that's being made to you. This is in terms of, of, you know, historic preservation, uh, under the Secretary of the Interior's, uh, control. Under the L C G's responsibility. It's very clear chain, you can go on the state website and, and read the limitations. And you can see how they talk about windows and, and restoring windows and rebuilding windows and, and all that sort of thing. So. The location of fenestration and the size of it is part of the facade that we're supposed to be ma- trying to maintain. So, rather than debate this, I think we've, we're coming to the conclusion, and Mr. Studenoff is gonna come inspect the site. See what's old and what's not old, what deserves to be preserved and, and what can be replaced. We've already agreed that we, there's been extensions since the designation, those don't fall under the controls that I've just mentioned, right? But the rest of this is different, and, and, you know, we want to work with you, and this is, I don't know, the owner's disappeared, but, um.
I think he got hacked, but.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Disappeared, there was some sort of hack.
So I'm, I'm glad you heard this, um, ramble by me, because this is not about your architects, this is not about, you know, our preferences. This is about what we're guided to do here, this is about the responsibility that we're taking on.
I know, I fully understand, and I appreciate, I appreciate you explaining, um, but I'm very aware that it's a historic house in the historic district and a very special historic village. And I appreciate the work of the board in preserving it as so. Um, that said, uh, we are trying to ensure that the houses stay standing for years to come, so mu- many generations ahead of us can enjoy them. Um, and have a little bit of modern, modernization along the way, um, you know, in, inside. So I think there is a balance to be struck, I know there's a lot of federal law, uh, around this, but some of that's still open to interpretation. Uh, for example, I dropped a, a solar roof project that I wanted to do in early discussions with Z B A, because of course no one could get comfortable with that. But there are specific accommodations for solar under federal law with reserving historical houses, so there's a lot in this. We've already conceded many, many things already, uh, down the road with what we really wanted to do. So, uh, I don't think we'd ask for that much in all honesty, but I mean, please, I would be grateful if you could come and inspect it. Um, and then maybe we should have a, a discussion next month on, uh, what's relevant and what's not.
Yeah.
Preservation.
Yeah, we might find that they were, we might find that they're twenty years old.
Mm-hmm, yeah, you know.
Yeah, it's possible.
Sure.
They were replaced, you know, you don't know.
So I will.
I mean, certainly a lot has been done to the house over the, over the years.
Right.
Not historic, we have vinyl sideboard, for example, which likely has asbestos under it that needs to be removed, right? That's not historic, right? So there's a lot of things that have to be done to improve this house and, you know, get, get it, let, let it be in a livable condition for years to come.
Good.
We share your vote, we share your objective. So, um, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, table this and to subject to inspection and verification by, by Zach, Mr. Studenoff.
Motion to table one fifty-two Division Street.
I'll second.
Okay.
December tenth meeting after, uh, the inspection.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and we will have revised drawings for that meeting as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Exactly, whenever you'd like to, uh, Jim Carrey's gonna set that up.
Sure.
Oh, that'd be great.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you, board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You get to stay.
Okay, so I guess we're having a repeat here, eighty-eight Redwood Road. Good evening, welcome back.
So eighty-eight Redwood, um, outside the historic district, um, it's a existing structure, uh, in Redwood. The house was built in the late seventies. We originally, we've been through a little bit of the history of this. We originally, we've been through a little bit of the history of this project. The owner had gone to, uh, non-female compliance system house. It's non-compliant in terms of its side yard and its existing pyramid violation. So the owner had tried to, spent the first year of working with the Harvard Committee to try to renovate and add-on to the house, and it proved that with the, being female compliant and, you know, it just wasn't possible. Um, because the Harvard Committee requested a significant retreat from the water, rightfully so. Um, because right, right now, the existing, the lawn is fertilized all the way, there's existing lawn all the way down to the water. It's basically the whole site, the site is lawn and pavement. So, so we've been to the Harvard Committee four times, and we have approval, actually have unanimous approval finally from the Harvard Committee on this current application. So what we're doing is, we've retreated all the way back to the street, uh, the front yard setback from Redwood Road. We, as you see in the, in the landscape plan. Yeah, so basically.
That's not, that's a recycled wood.
Yeah.
Very good, oh.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah, that's a different.
Very good, very.
Oh. So it's this, so what you can see is the, the proposed house is, is, we're located here. The existing house is pulled all the way, like, so we worked with the Harvard Committee for, um, redesigning the house.
So this is a new house.
Yeah, I'll make it easy for you.
So it's the lawn, the, currently the lawn goes all the way down to the wetlands, and what we have, we negotiate with the Harvard Committee is basically every, everything you see, uh, north of the house going down to the water is gonna be a naturally revegetated native habitat, which this, um, basically outlines it. So the only landscape is going to be just a, there's a small deck on the backside and around the side. Uh, we located the house, now the house is, uh, proposed house is female compliant, it also meets all the pyramid, um, sort of setbacks, um, new IA system. It's gonna be, you know, this, this is a little, this leading, it's a little wide angle, but when you look at the site plan, it's really, it's just, it's basically just a driveway, a pretty modest driveway, the owner has three children, so if there's two parking spaces and we just made the driveways, you can have to back out under Redwood. Uh, the new IA system is located actually under the driveway, we located the system as far from the wetland line as we possibly could, so it's actually tucked into this corner. In the terms of the architecture, you know, we had to, you know, a, a tight site and, you know, bringing the house, um, to the side yard to give us a little bit of room, to give a little bit of daylight, a little bit more privacy, um, to the west, because there's really, there's really no, he currently has this lawn now, so there's, there's no lawn, there's, there's no real outside space. So we had to sort of work, um, volumetrically to make the house, um, kinda come together in a sensible way. That you can see, um, it's an existing four-bedroom plus den house, and we're proposing just a four-bedroom house, so we're actually, um, it's actually sort of one, one less room. Um, and the footprint was an evolution of keeping, bringing the, the, the volume of the house basically all the way, because there's kind of this wedge that happens with these set, with these side yard setbacks. And then also that we have the, the, um, effect of the pyramid line. So we had to really dig in volumetrically to put together a house that, I mean, just, you know, being outside of the historic district, we are architects and we do a lot of modern architecture, and that's sort of what we do, and I've been doing it a long time out here, for twenty-five years now. And, um, so it's, it's a very simple building volumetrically, and that was the goal, is to have it kind of a simple volumetric building. We do have some glass on this side, this is our only real south light that we're getting, we have minimal glazing on the east and west side. The, the, looking at the site plan, basically, it's, it's a pretty modest, um, site, and it's gonna be, it'll be landscaped on both sides. The hedge along the front is gonna be replaced, and we have just enough space for these, you know, three sort of specimens, or a great myrtle, or very small trees.
There is a house there now, but, but you, they're gonna knock that, knock that down.
Yeah, because the, the existing house is, goes all the way out to the wetland line, so we had to pull everything back.
So this is totally new?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
It's not a relocation.
No, no.
No. Okay.
I mean, like moving the house back, yeah. No, there's nothing, the house, the existing house, like I said, it's not female compliant, it has a basement, the basement was a big hall space, was underwater, it's too low. Um, there's nothing, you know.
So it'll be demolished and.
It's gonna be demolished.
A new house, great.
The existing house is much further closer to the water.
You're right.
So, so, you know, the, the, the house, the proposed house has a pretty compact footprint, um, and we were able to, you know, by keeping a pretty, you know, very sensible, pretty clean plan, that we were able to kind of have these sort of distinct volumes, and like I said, it's just one, we have a, you know, glazing on the front. We have a roof that comes along the front.
Chick, yeah, yeah.
As you can see, so, um, so we have shading, so we were looking to get, you know, the house is actually gonna be very energy efficient, um, and we have southern light coming in the side. There is the, by the Harvard Committee, um, by pulling us all the way to the thirty-foot line, you know, they asked that we go to the ZBA, because there's a little corner of this roof that goes over the setback line, so we're actually going to the ZBA to get this, uh,
Just do it.
It's like nine square.
Variance, yeah, forty-one square feet.
And so, you know, there was an issue whether the, whether that needed a variance, but we just decided to just do it, and they, they, the Harvard Committee was, you know, happy that we kind of went that way, so hopefully the ZBA will agree with that, but everything else is conforming.
I think it's nice.
Yeah, me too. He's very handsome.
Yeah, I like it.
I'll entertain a motion.
Well, we don't have a motion. This is.
This is just discussion.
There you go.
Oh, goodness, okay.
Come before us and present.
See, we're gonna give you guys something tonight.
He's waiting, he's ready.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it looks great.
Any comments? That gives me catching a lot of stuff. You happy with it?
Yeah, I think it looks nice.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Really clean.
Have a good weekend.
Thank you.
Okay. And our last is two oh seven Madison Street. Come up in front and identify yourselves. How are you?
This is new.
Okay.
I believe it's new.
And all sorts of people, take now, what it does, you know, all sorts of people.
It wasn't on my agenda, but I see it's on the new one that she just gave us, this one.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but it's not on the, I got this today, but it's.
Yeah.
It's already changed.
Do you have hard copies or anything here?
They're gonna get it, I have faith. I do. These two know this stuff like that. Look at them, they're so young.
That's alright.
Well, this takes stuff, right?
I'm telling you.
I know. Foolish. On our part.
If it works, it makes it easier.
When it works.
Yeah, they use, they forgive. What's it, the book say about two oh seven Madison Street five?
It's ancient.
I'm sure it is, let's, let, let's see.
We can read that while we're. Okay. Eighteen ten.
Ooh. Ooh.
Alright. Two stories, three bags, things that are like sashes. Shingles, foundation. Rear L.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is fine.
Um, my name is Jessica Hopshire, I'm the owner of two oh seven Madison Street, and this is Javier Riosella, Riosella Studios. He's my architect, and then my builder James is here as well.
Hello, James.
How are you guys?
Good.
So we're coming to you tonight just for the session, obviously, on the public meetings in December. We just wanted to get ahead of things, uh, and get things back to them early. We have gone before the ZBA, we have one area in Central, um, but we've got that approved in October.
This is now.
So what we're looking to do is completely restore the original house, leave it as it is, so it's just new material, new cedar shakes.
Oh, look at that.
Um, in this color dragon thread, we'll be seeing new white cedar, and then we'll have a red cedar roof that will age naturally. Um, we're gonna completely restore the front door, the original mahogany column. And porch as well. So everything from the front, we're looking for the original, but just being renovated.
We can't wait to read all of that.
And then we're putting in tradition on the back that you can't see from the front, so it's completely hidden from the front, and just from the side, from the backside, it's really. And, um, we're completely running the, um, restore the original hash garage.
Great. It needs some work, I mean. It does need a little work.
We don't really have, we don't have the same package.
I'm so sorry. Oh, he does have it, I'm sorry he has it, yeah. Oh, my lord.
That's the gym and. Recreational areas. Okay.
Wow, okay.
The idea with the long.
Old, new.
So it goes all the way from Madison.
Yeah, this is a flat, uh.
So from the front, you don't even know it's there.
Hell, yeah, it goes all the way.
Get rid of that beautiful garden and like stone that they have back there.
There's a, a patio, but it's a pretty bad shade and it's very.
I used to water the plants there when I was in middle school.
That's kind of funny.
Yeah.
I think we start from the street. Where's this?
Madison.
Here, where's the pool?
This is.
Right, so this is the existing historic downstairs.
Right, and then we've got. The addition appears to be twice as big. Oh, did I see?
Yeah.
Did I see which house it is?
Yeah, this is from the street from Madison.
Oh, yeah.
This is when you, um, get inside to the driveway. This is the back of the main house.
Lot of plans.
And there's, um, still the main house. And there is, uh, two of these structures existing.
What page do you want, sir?
Okay, facade elevation.
Uh, the big elevator. No, no, which is in the back of the, of the lot.
My goodness.
And this is the garage, and, and a couple more.
This is very large.
A lot about buildings.
No, 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 that's not what I was talking about.
Oh, okay.
It's not about GMA.
Funny.
This is very large. We're not talking about, you know, what the, what the lot commits, not that, I'm saying, so you're proposing relative to existing old house. The scale of what you're proposing is very large.
Yeah, I actually.
Just wanted to.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is not about what
Yeah, yeah.
what does the lot commit, it's what visually.
We're not adding a little bit, we're adding a lot.
The preservation of the existing house.
And you don't see any of that from, from the existing house, where they're respecting.
So, okay, so it's important to realize the code in this village, which is different from the code in South Hampton Village. For preservation. Is that the board is concerned with all four sides. Oftentimes, the code relates to what can be seen in a public way, which would be sort of that sometimes, the portions of the side. This code is about what can be seen from any neighborhood. So it's all four sides.
Yeah.
And, and it's not, it doesn't take vegetation into account, so it's not about like, well.
That's pretty much true.
We, we.
Okay, I just, I just pointed, so just my initial impression here is that, and you have a lot of vertical lines that make it kind of hard to understand what's, what's happening visually, but the the length of what you're proposing is triples the length of the house. Give or take. I mean, I'm saying, this is the house, and it's too small a scale, we can't possibly read it at this scale, but this, let's say the house itself is forty feet.
I can read it.
You can read it?
He's got those young eyes.
He's got them eyes.
He does, baby, he does.
So the house is forty?
You know, the rendering.
Yeah, this is the original house, so basically, the.
Are those the columns painted black?
It's that dark green, they're green, right, they're kind of a greenish color.
Okay.
Yeah. Or, you know, I mean, the house is now.
I see, they should be the trim color.
The.
We're gonna have a monochromatic. What, what trim color are you thinking?
White.
Oh, white, dark.
Yeah, no, I'm just, just historically.
He's just throwing it out there.
You're, you're proposing something that's quite radical, and.
Do we have a picture that shows what it looks like now?
That, I mean, this is a colonial revival sort of nineteen, ten, twenty porch.
I can't read the dimensions of the.
Yeah, we added on.
Yeah, it's all green, it's been that way for a very long time.
Interesting.
All the trim, everything is.
And it, and it's been that way a very long time.
Or monochromatic.
For someone like you, remember, that's pretty long, buddy.
Yeah, we, I don't. Yeah, I think we can explain how we have been, or tried to be very respectful with, with all the features, and I get that sort of features now.
That's true.
So then, this long shape of the house comes because we, well, respecting the setback, we didn't want it to be seen from the street. Or look like an intrusive structure.
Right. That's not mine.
We grew, we grew to the, towards the back. So basically, if you see the plan, there, the, this is the existing house, right? And there's, the kitchen is here right now, so basically, we moved it here to make the kitchen more usable for twenty twenty-two. And, um, we, we grew, uh, this way, um, with the glass box, and the reason why we, we decided to do glasses because we based all the architectural features in the existing, uh, we have a glass house in the back. And, and the, the previous image related to the, the trees in the back, and, and also, we like the layout, so you can see also the inside architecture, so the glass, you can see that it's still pretty good, it's really minimal in terms of the things they, they knew on the field. So eventually, if somebody wants to demolish all the addition, you can.
That's not exactly the historic part of the house, obviously.
No, we, we just changed, we changed the material on the, on the kitchen, mainly that's.
This is like the library.
So my suggestion, which is just a thought.
Did you guys see this?
No. Just a thought, I mean, if you.
It's definitely cool.
If, if you need that much space.
I didn't see that on my side.
So let's pay.
If you need to enlarge the house that way, I would suggest that you take advantage of the width. Little. Narrow. It could be, well, be wide, it could be too big. From the street, we want the same, doesn't matter how wide, it could be narrow. Or be, it doesn't change its. It.
If you make it wider on the street, I will see that protruding.
You're gonna see, uh, if you're on Madison Street, you're, you're gonna see this, this, and this is very large. That's where we started this conversation, and it's too big, there's too much of that. I'm only suggesting that one way to try to.
Yeah.
You know.
We started carefully on the angles, uh, from the street.
Well, just L, kind of bring it back and then L it over, because it just, it has the appearance, you know, you, you could enclose the same amount of.
Of the setbacks, huh? It's a cross state.
Their backs are.
Must have been respected, and also.
You don't have a lot of width, you have some width off to the one side, probably not the other.
Yeah, you guys got some room, huh?
But I, visually, I think this is, it's also very modern.
We're trying to maximize the sun exposure to, to the addition.
What, what is it, so?
Modern.
Um, maybe the renders are, but, um, all the features, the windows, uh, the. Yeah, this, this is not likely gonna become some solid parts, um, but the, the B S with the glass box, but maybe not that little. The proportion of, of the set of plan is that, uh, but we're trying to bring features from the, the original structure. And the windows are the same, the, the pictures are making different. And so you'll be, everything's a whole, and I think the glass box is gonna help to see through in a way that you really see the main house, and two volumes, uh, to the rooms and the bedrooms. Uh, and you're gonna see through the trees in the back, that we find, um.
You're making me feel very old.
Yeah.
Because, and I try to, I'm trying to aesthetically be very open minded, and I think that, that what you're designing on its own is actually rather striking and rather beautiful. That's not the point, no, no, what, what you're doing is you're marrying that to this old house out front, which has its own interesting things going on with that porch, which is quite lovely, you know, uh, you know, that's a very special feature. But this long metal, this sort of glass box extension doesn't look like it's, it doesn't belong, these two volumes don't belong together.
So do you want some, would you prefer us see something that looked more traditional, like the original house?
Yes, and not as much of it, I mean, I think in the guidelines, it talks of the, you know, being harmonious means that the materials be harmonious, that the volumes and shapes and styles and window types, all that be harmonious, that's sort of like, the old house sort of sets the vocabulary there, you know, and then you have to work that.
That's. The only thing that we haven't copied exactly the same from the system, is that the glass box has flat roof instead of like the regular roof, it's like a house. But basically, that is popping and based in, uh, architectures from the previous houses, it's like glass house, that's the main house, glass house, main house, so that was the idea. So, we really try, except that why you're saying that we haven't done, this is what we really try to.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not trying to be a spoilsport or like, uh, as I said, I think if you look, if you isolate the area that you've designed to build unto itself, forgetting that's an extension to this old house, I think it's quite, I mean.
And if, if the newer part was more of a traditional, then it wouldn't, it would be okay for it to come out to angle with the L, because it would match the house.
And sometimes a glass like a little.
Isn't bigger, and it's set back.
And a little glass sort of enclosed connector can visually separate like what's new from what's old, but, but you've got more of the connector in proportion, there's like a lot of glass connector here, so that's, it's, that's wider than that, and this is very wide, so they're not really connectors, they're half of what you're designing is that glass box connector thing.
But, but I, I, we're trying to respect very much the, the previous house, I saw in, um, in aluminum extension of one of the houses. The mold is in one of the sets, and so that's what we didn't wanna do, so that's why the, the, we, the, the study's in the middle, so it's really uh, separating what is new and what is old, and, and if you look at the glass, the way the, we just don't know like two openings for two doors on the different floors to connect to the old house, so it's, it's something like even, like archaeological, right? Um, when you design like an extension of an old building, so, uh, very, very like mostly respectful, we don't wanna try to look like we're uh, part of the old house, mainly because of, because we're respected and we like it, you know?
Um, I believe you think that.
Correct.
I just, I, I, I'm just expressing my personal feelings here, that, that, that this doesn't accomplish that. It does, because I'm seeing, first of all, as we started, you know, what you're, what you're proposing is almost, in terms of its footprint, not maybe because it's narrow, maybe not, but in terms of the length, let's just say the house would now be three times as long as it presently is.
It's.
Let's say this, is this forty, is this little guy forty, the old part, is he forty? And then we, then I'm doubling him to there, and then I'm getting from there to there, so now the length of this house as proposed, the length of it
So a hundred and twenty feet long.
Is three times, is three times the length of what, what it presently is, that's a very large, that's even if this sets back, which it will, because it's narrower, even if this sets back from both sides of the house, it's gonna be that long, and it's half of it is glass, and I mean, that, you, if you were proposing to build that somewhere, they'd be like, wow, that's interesting, well, it's half of its glass, well, whatever, but you're not, this is an extension to a rather, uh, I mean, there's a lot going on in this old house with these three demi-lune windows, and, and that wonderful newer force, there's a lot going on there. So, I don't know, to me, there's just, you're proposing a lot.
Is it possible to just make the glass part of the back instead of two stories, just the one story?
That would be a big improvement.
Too big, it's far too big.
As a connector.
Or, so, so.
Where we have the stairs, so then the stairs, you wouldn't be able to get upstairs.
Well, you may not need them if you don't have an upstairs. You know, there was this one story. Two stories in the front, and you're adding on an addition, and you've got a recessed yard back there, so if it's just one story, we're not gonna see any of this.
I mean, what if.
She knows they have.
The glass house, one story, and the roofs that are like same language as the house, we can grow in two floors with that.
Mm-hmm, I would think.
Okay, and you mentioned, we opened this meeting, you're notified by the building inspector that we're looking at a house that has flat roof and, and pitched roofs.
Yeah.
And is it, there's a, I forgot the code, but there's something in the code about mixing those two roof styles. So, so, um, that's a whole separate issue.
I've never heard that.
I never heard of that.
Okay. No, Carrie brought it to me, I just didn't read it out.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
It's a slope.
That's for probably a low slope roof, not a flat roof.
So anyway.
It's like a one on twelve.
It was applying to, it was, it was, it was the one on Harrison Street, right, that was the one.
The one that.
Bluff point, bluff point, sorry. So anyway, um, this is a discussion item, and, and I think you're getting a sense of what we're saying.
You understand what we've been saying.
A little more of the tradition, if, if you're taking the connector concept, and you're kind of duplicating that to an extent that, that dominates the original house.
Right.
Right? A, and you know, the connector would, I don't know, it looks like six or eight feet, maybe twelve feet long, and, and that's one tenth of what's going to become a hundred and twenty foot long house. So, um, i- is there any way to try to achieve some of the openness that you want? I mean, even if it's floor to ceiling, uh, glass, I don't even wanna say that.
Can we, maybe we can get rid of, not the second floor, but the first floor, so you really can go through, and you just connect on the top floor with the glass pass, and you connect like three volumes or something, and you really have.
Does, it doesn't have to be as long, I mean, I know, if you want to have a more.
He was trying to be so serious.
But there's a point at which the scale of the existing house does establish how, how far you can go with that.
No, I absolutely understand, and the, the addition is smaller than the existing house, and I think maybe the proportion.
But it's, no, it's really not, it's.
It may be, in terms of its actual footprint, looks like it's slightly.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's smaller, this is.
It's smaller, it's smaller.
The addition is small.
It's smaller, yes, it's smaller than the original house.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Well, it's twice as long as the existing house.
But it's very, it's narrow, it's.
So, okay, so that gets into the whole issue of massing. So, the optics of this is standing out on Madison Street and looking at the side of the old house and the side of the new. The new is once as long as the old.
I do think.
I'm just, just going by.
Because of the narrowness of the lot when you are on Madison, you don't see a whole lot of what's going on in the back.
Yes.
Okay.
But you're gonna see the entire length of that house, and as I said earlier, if it's only ten feet wide, its actual footprint may technically, mathematically be smaller than the existing house, but the massing of it is where the whole thing falls apart, because it appears to be.
To be long.
It is in fact twice as long as that side facade, and so it doesn't really matter how wide it is at that point, because that's what it looks like. You know, and so the visual on this is, is exaggerating, and the, and the lack of compatibility of the materials is the other big issue here, I guess. To, I mean, glass is wonderful, and that's, that's, it's a wonderful, lovely space, but it's just not architecturally kind of relating to the old house.
That is exactly what is in the previous house, it's the glass house, what we took.
You mean that.
Yeah, but that's.
As inspiration, look, you, you have, you have.
That's your role. Yeah, that's, that's not what, that's not the order.
Just, just stay with me on this one, just look at this, okay.
Yes, yeah.
This is twenty-four feet, right? And I think this is six and change. So you have really thirty feet of screening here, which you can put this house behind.
Right.
So if you wanted to, if you wanted to make it wider, you could make it shorter, which is, which, which would address what we're saying, you get the same square footage within this, right? Right?
That's right, you L it, is that what you're saying to, to bring.
Well, you could L it.
Even just widen.
Or, or just widen it here, I don't know what the, I can't read these dimensions here, but.
The, the issue we have is that we have a setback line, which is this blue line, so we really cannot grow this way, this is our limit on this side, so we can grow to the front, but that's being like even farther from the original house, which we don't want to.
That's thirty-one four, but.
But on the other side, it's thirty-five.
He's gonna solve this problem.
But to me, this looks.
But on the, on the opposite side, it's thirty-five.
So if we, if we grew more this way, you're okay seeing it from the street, this, this up now, further than.
Okay.
Yeah, well, it depends on the design.
The other issue is we have, to have septic in the front here, um.
Just about.
But just.
Okay.
So this is twice as long.
I believe that too.
So this now becomes ninety, like ninety-three sixty-nine.
He's, he's gonna take care of it, I'm telling you, I know, yes.
This, if they can turn this somehow, and.
I'm thinking, yeah, you could do that, and, and maybe there's a way to screen this with some vegetation, right?
This is not what they wanna do.
Does that make sense to you, Chris?
Tell me if you.
Okay.
This is.
Over here, this is twenty-four feet, can you see?
Okay.
This is twenty-four feet, this is six feet. So if you were looking at this from the street, you have thirty feet wide, more or less theoretically that they could, as opposed to making this twelve feet or eighteen feet wide, they can make it almost thirty feet wide, right?
They make it.
Now, they're saying that they have a lot line setback over here.
Violent setback is pre-existing.
Okay.
So, in order, but they have fifteen, they have more than fifteen feet, they have thirty-five feet on this side.
Twice, twice.
Say twenty feet on this side. So if they, if they expanded this volume back here.